Recording in progress.
Good evening, and welcome to the Oceanside Planning Commission meeting for May 22nd. If I could get everybody to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to every government with its changes, one organization, and with its power, even if it is only limited to justice.
Thank you. City Planner, would you please do the roll call?
Certainly. Chairman Rosales.
Present.
Vice Chair Morrissey.
Present.
Commissioner Balma. Commissioner Anthony.
Present.
Commissioner Dodds.
Present.
Commissioner Simons. And Commissioner Malik.
Present.
Let the record show that five members of the Planning Commission are present. We have a quorum.
Great, thank you. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, Communications are matters not on tonight's agenda, any slips?
Chairman Rosales, we have no slips.
Great, thank you. Approval of our minutes from our last meeting on May 8th. Any discussion or a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Commissioner Malik, second please.
Second motion.
And Commissioner Anthony, seconds. Let's go ahead and vote.
Let the record show that the motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Consent calendar items, we have nothing listed this evening. We do not have anything under transportation items. And this evening, rare occasion where we do not have any public hearing items. Nor this evening do we have appeal of city planners determination. We do have a couple of discussion items. Discussion item number four is a Brother Benno's update. I'll turn it over to City Planner to provide that.
Thank you Chairman Rosales and members of the Planning Commission. It's been a year to the date since we last had an update regarding Brother Benno's. It was last year, this time when staff and OPD reported that Brother Benno's had implemented all the requirements that resulted from the 2021 update to the conditional use permit under which they operate. And OPD reported at the time that calls for service were down and that all conditions that had been implemented, they were being good stewards. Starting February of this year, the city started receiving complaints from various property owners, property managers, business owners regarding increased homeless activities and related impacts in and around the business park, industrial park there. Staff and OPD met with Brother Benno's and agreed upon some modest changes to help address the issue. These included reducing food service, ending food service at 10:45 a.m. instead of 4:00 p.m. Ending distribution of hygiene kits at 10:45 a.m. instead of 4:00 p.m. And updated security and operational management plan to include the hiring of a second security and sanitation worker to provide onsite security and enhanced trash pickup until 7:00 p.m. each day. Since that time, OPD has stated that a number of complaints regarding Brother Benno's facility have decreased and that staff witnessed significant improvements in Oceanside Industrial Park. Tonight, we have representatives from OPD to give you an update, and then we'll also have members of the public here to probably provide some public testimony. So that concludes my presentation, and we'll turn it over to OPD at this point.
Great, thank you for that update. Who's presenting this evening for OPD? Gentlemen, good evening. If you would introduce yourselves, please.
Good evening Commissioner, thank you for having us. I am Captain Torino Valdivinos with the Police Department.
Sergeant Nathaniel Brazel.
As the City Planner mentioned, we did, we have met with Brother Benno's on a number of occasions, and they have been more than willing to cooperate and work with us. They implemented a couple of the changes that he mentioned. However, those, those changes were supposed to be implemented a year ago. And somehow, through time, through turnover, that wasn't the case. So we revisited those, we implemented those. We did see a significant reduction in the amount of people and unsheltered people around the area. However, I think it still can be improved significantly. I travel, through my travels from the station to here, I always drive through there, and on my way here today, I saw a significant increase in the amount of people that are out there. I have yet to see the cleanup crew out and about, so I'd like to see them maybe enforce that or actually put that into, into play, because I haven't seen that taking place. I do, we, we feel that potentially hiring a third-party vendor as a security company would benefit the industrial park, because they currently have just interior employees that do their security work, and I don't know how much security work they actually do. That would be beneficial.
No, I agree. They're all in-house security and they double as, you know, this morning I did see a cleanup crew out there. It's definitely an issue I'm charged for homeless. We're down there all. We understand the issue. It's a challenge.
Chairman Rosales, if I may.
Certainly.
The memorandum prepared for tonight's meeting also did include some recommendations, further recommendations from the OPD, and those included monthly meetings between Brother Benno's management staff, OPD and city staff, and Oceanside Industrial Park managers. A requirement for Brother Benno's to contract with a security company to provide directed patrol of the neighborhood daily until 7:00 p.m. A requirement for Brother Benno's to hire a sanitation worker to be onsite until 7:00 p.m. to assist with trash removal and clean the areas adjacent to the facility on a daily basis, and a requirement for Brother Benno's to write a 24-hour contact phone number to business owners within the industrial park. So that is a recommendation OPD is making tonight.
Great, I appreciate those, pointing those out. I was on the ad hoc committee of the Planning Commission when we first took this up in 2018, 2019, and so we had a number of hearings to get solicited input from the public, from the property owners in the area, and of course, Brother Benno's. And I recall after we adjusted the CUP that there were marked improvements, but then we, we expressed that we wanted to see, like we're doing this evening, regular updates to kind of gauge how things were going. I recall during those public hearings that we had that we tried to find a balance between the activities of Brother Benno's and how far that might reach into the surrounding area, given that, you know, they're in a, they attract the client base that they attract, but then there's associated issues, you know, how far could we push the envelope essentially of the CUP? So it was definitely a balancing act to try to find that sort of sweet spot between their obligation and the spirit of CUP, and then, you know, the, the surrounding area and the homelessness or the, the client base that was using the services of Brother Benno's. And I felt at that time that we kind of struck a fair balance. But I want to hear some input from the community that is embedded there, that sees this on a daily basis, so obviously that's what this, this is, is an invite for the public to provide their input. Anything else before we go there, and we can call you back as we hear some things, but go ahead.
Just lastly, they did, they did work with us with implementing the, or enforcing the overnight RV ordinance that we have here in our city. They did cooperate with that, with us, and it's, has made a difference. Again, I went there this morning, I went through there again today, and five or six RVs parked out there. Thank you for your time.
Before you go, yeah, any questions from Commissioners? Go ahead, Commissioner Ballick.
Good evening. Question on the hours for security, external security, you said the recommendation is still 7:00 p.m. When is the area most impacted? And is 7:00 p.m. why that, why that timeframe, I guess I'm asking?
We chose seven because we thought businesses could be open until six or so, and we thought having security there till about seven provides business owners and business community in that area some additional security until that.
So the concern from the business owners, from your perspective, is that it's a concern during business hours, not after business hours? Is that an accurate statement?
Well, I think their concern is all the time. We just felt that it was, it would be beneficial for individuals working. If they stayed late till six or seven, it would be beneficial to have security until seven.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Dodds, go ahead.
Yes, I have two questions. You mentioned that the plans that were, that are in place now were supposed to have been implemented last year. Exactly when were they implemented?
So I came to the unit in January of this year. From what I understand, in May of 2021, internally, Brother Benno's implemented these. And if you'd look at it, it actually says, you know, that they're going to cut off their services at 10:45, which is what we thought they were doing, but that was not taken.
So do you know when they, when these plans were actually, actually being executed?
Yes, we met with them in February or March, and I think in April, they began executing them.
Okay, so we don't really have a lengthy time to really gather significant data as far to see how the improvements have taken?
Correct, since April 1st.
And you said that you traveled through the area each day as you go through work, and you haven't seen people, there are people picking up trash, or is there significant trash in the area, or you just haven't seen the people?
Little bit of both. This evening, I did, I did witness some, some trash, some boxes. Sometimes I don't, but I did this evening.
I know we said that we're supposed to, they're supposed to give a report on a regular basis, but that's not really a true timeframe. Can we make a recommendation saying that they report quarterly?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, this forum was meant to bring them back on a, on a frequency that wasn't established, but if we want to establish a frequency, we can certainly do that. Commissioner Morrissey, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks for what you guys do, Captain. I think I heard you say that you recommend that they have a third-party on security?
Correct.
Are you also recommending that they have a third-party for cleanup?
I'm not recommending that.
Okay. I just wanted to clear that up. Okay.
More, I'm more concerned with the security portion for the business owners, the business community in that area.
Thank you.
Thank you. Again, we may call you back if some question arises. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to go to Brother Benno's, any representatives from them, first offer anyway, that you'd like come forward and add any context to the conversation? If not, then we'll go to the public. But Brother Benno's, if you have a representative here this evening who'd like to come forward, you're welcome to. Good evening, sir. If you give us your name for the record.
My name is Michael Moskowitz, and I'm a member of the Board of Directors of the Brother Benno Foundation, one of the three offices of the President. I don't want to restate what's already been documented in the, in the notes and in remarks, but I think you get the sense that Brother Benno is not only providing a mission, but we are also very respectful and are excellent neighbors and supporters of the community, our business park neighbors, as well as the OPD, as well as the office of the, of the city. When the, when we had a meeting in March of this year and the issues were brought forward, we took very serious and definitive action to address the concerns that were brought forward. We hired a second security guard, so we have now have two security guards at the expense of Brother Benno to patrol. We, these people also serve in the function of trash collection, so they patrol the area, they, they police the area in terms of debris. We have recently also purchased a golf cart to facilitate the movement of these individuals around the industrial park so that they can better access all the entire facility. They only, they also serve the purpose when our guests linger, that they, they facilitate their movement out of the area. One of the recommendations was to strictly enforce our hours of service. We have done that. We, we provide all the services that we always provided for the last 40 years, and we, we end our services at 11:00 in the morning to facilitate, again, people getting the services that they need, and then moving forward to wherever it is they, they are housed. So it's a work in progress. We've been really working at this very diligently, particularly since April of this year, when the, when the issues were brought forward, and we will continue to do that. We are good neighbors, we want our neighbors to be happy with the services that we provide. We recognize that we have a very difficult and challenging community that we are serving, but the impression that if Brother Benno was somehow not there, that the homeless would just disappear is a misconception. We served in the month of April over 12,000 meals in one month. If these people did not receive these meals, what would they do? They would steal, they would harass, they would be menaces to the community. They would not just go away. We are not enabling the homeless community, we are supporting the homeless communities so that they can survive. And the, the thought that somehow Brother Benno disappeared, that the homeless would disappear along with us, is a misconception. We provide services so that they can survive. We're not enabling them. We have taken many people off the streets. We have, in the month of April alone, provided over 1,100 housing vouchers so that people can not be homeless and instead be in a house or a hotel or facility. Without Brother Benno, these people would be on the street. 1,100 incidents just in the month of April. So those are statistics, those are facts, that that's not hyperbole. And so, again, I just want to reiterate that we are good neighbors, we, we want to be supportive, we have been supportive, we will continue to be supportive, and we, we, we do the best that we, we physically can, and we will continue to do that. It's a work in progress. It will, we assume it will continue to improve.
Thank you for those comments. I don't know if you've had an opportunity to look at the memo provided to the Commission, but in that memo had recommended, or the OPD recommended for additional management strategies for Brother Benno's. Are you familiar with that? Because my question would be, are you in concert with, with what's being recommended? And if you haven't seen it, we'll, we'll call it out as, as we walk through this.
Is that in the Planning Commission memo?
It is.
Yes. Yeah, the bullet point's on the bottom. We, we, we have addressed those issues. We, we have the second security guard that is there until 7:00 p.m. We have provided our contact information.
So you're agreeable to these four items, then?
I'm sorry?
You're agreeable to the recommendations, then, that are listed here as additional strategies?
Well, the, we, we, the, the idea of hiring a 24-hour security company, is that what you're referring to?
Well, I'm referring to all four of them. I'll, I'll read them through. Monthly meetings between Brother Benno's management, OPD, city staff, and the park managers, that was the first one. The second one is, you're right, requirement to contract with a security company to provide directed patrol of the neighborhood daily until 7:00 p.m. The third one is to hire a sanitation worker to be onsite until 7:00 p.m. to assist with trash removal and clean the adjacent areas. And then number four is requirement to provide a 24-hour contact phone number to the business owners within the industrial park.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, well, the, the meetings we are, we've been open to, I believe we have met. I haven't, but I know other members of the board and the managers have met with the OPD as, as requested. The security company, again, we, we felt that by hiring the second security guard, that we would be adequately providing security for the area through 7:00 p.m. We, we felt like that was the critical time, as mentioned before by, by the officer. We didn't think that 24-hour was really a Brother Benno responsibility. Certainly if the industrial park felt like that was something that we wanted to go in on as a, as a team, as a group, that would be something that we would, we would address as a team. The sanitation worker, we, again, we had the security person doubling as a security, as, as a sanitation person with the golf cart. They can pick up trash, we, they remove it, they bring it to our receptacle. And again, all reports are that the area is much cleaner and much different than it was prior to this notice. We also had an issue with RVs that were parked in the area, six or seven of them that were parked and were seemingly permanent fixtures, and if you drove around there now, you would see that there are no RVs, zero RVs are in, on the street now. And that is in direct response to our diligence in, in our security efforts. Prior to that, there was, the, the RVs were just there, they are not there anymore. There has been a marked improvement, and again, we're just, this is since April, we are now the end of May, and we expect that the, the situation will continue to improve.
Thank you, sir.
Any other question?
No questions at this time, we may call you back if we need to. All right. I'm going to open it up then for, I see my dais is not lit, so Commissioners, I think we're okay for the moment, but we do have a speaker's queue, so I'm going to call each of you, or I'll let you go ahead and call it up one at a time.
Thank you Chairman Rosales. Again, I'm going to call your names up, and again, we're using the electronic speakers, so if you can keep an eye on your name up there on the screen, come forward, give us your name, and you'll have three minutes to speak. First will be Andrea Contreras, Bryce Aberg, Jonathan Peacher, and then Tyler Stemley.
Thank you. Good evening, my name is Andrea Contreras, I'm a land use attorney, and I represent three of the property owners who comprise over 100 tenants in the business park. First, let me say that this electronic queuing system is amazing. I think it's really cool that you guys have. On a more serious note, I've already submitted a letter for the record, but I wanted to come up and emphasize a few things, and as we've been listening to what's come before, I made a few notes. The first issue I want to emphasize is that these stakeholders really need a place at the table. The reason you saw a petition with over 700 signatures on it is because people feel, the business owners feel like they're not being heard, they're not being listened to, their issues aren't being addressed. And, you know, I'm pleased to see that it's a suggestion that managers be involved in monthly meetings, because right now, I know that my clients feel that there's kind of a closed universe of Oceanside PD and city staff and Brother Benno's where they're not being heard. They feel like, as a result, they're, you're not seeing the full picture of the impacts there. For instance, I'm, I'm just now hearing that, you know, the, the picture is no different after 7:00 p.m. than before 7:00 p.m. What they really need is somebody to get there before business hours start in order to clear the pathways and the entrances for their, for their employees and clients. That said, we believe that it is time for the city to reconsider the compatibility of the uses here, and we support a hearing to revoke the CUP. Nobody's saying that Brother Benno's should go away, but the issue has become that the uses here are no longer compatible. In truth, they haven't been for a while, but they really aren't. And, you know, Brother Benno's can't solve that, my clients can't solve that, the city has to solve that. The CUP is the city's animal, and you have to solve that. In the alternative, you know, we just heard that, you know, the changes that were supposed to be made a year ago, they weren't implemented until just a few months ago, and, you know, I would say that part of the problem is that these, these changes have not been made condition of the permit, they're not enforceable. You know, not in any kind of formal way. And so what we would propose is that the CUP be amended and that enforceable conditions that are going to improve the lives of the people who work around there be, be added. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Bryce Aberg. Thank you for having me, I appreciate your time. I am an owner of Ocean Park Partners. We own approximately 165,000 square feet within nine buildings surrounding Brother Benno's within the airport area. Our goal has been to revitalize the airport area to improve the real estate and, and for the businesses and communities in Oceanside. We have invested millions of dollars of our own money and in our investors' money over the last several years. We represent over 50 small business owners that are Oceanside residents and taxpayers. Since acquiring our first building in 2019, we have seen the situation escalate, and it has significantly gotten worse in the market. We continue to remind, are reminded from our tenants and reports of theft, crime, safety, trash, loitering, significant drug use, physical fights, altercations, defecating on our businesses, you know, on our front doorsteps, and it goes on and on. The problems have gotten much worse, and it's directly related to, unfortunately, it's, you know, Brother Benno's is doing a great job for the community trying to, to feed the homeless, but what it's done is destroying small businesses within this marketplace. These small businesses are losing customers significantly and being forced to relocate out to the Oceanside. The CUP 100% needs to be revoked and relocated to an area that allows for this use. This problem has gotten much worse. I mean, I was out there on Sunday, and I know they have a, they've hired a, a security guard that drives around in a golf cart, and I physically watched the security guard sitting there talking with the homeless, blaring loud music in the, in their golf cart and not doing anything. The problem has gotten much worse, and it just, I don't know, you know, how we can solve this with Brother Benno's being our neighbor within the city of Oceanside. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening Council, Jonathan Peacher, Investors Property Management Group. On behalf of the owner's president and our good small business tenants around the community, I'm an Oceanside resident and the property manager and business owner myself of Investors Property Management Group for like 19 years now in the community. We're on El Camino 2181. We have a lighter issue on that side of the, of town. As it relates to the homeless population specifically related to Brother Benno's, I have managed the Copperwood Center across the street from the Roymar folks for the last, I don't know, five years, and then the new five buildings on Roymar just came under contract. But those two properties alone, I have over 110 tenants, small business owners. I'm the middleman between the owners and the tenants and the OPD, which are doing a great job. I still love them so much. But our tenants are fed up. They're really upset. They call me first. It's such a burden on me as a small business myself. But we have the same issue over on El Camino. It's only gotten worse. Like I said, our tenants are getting increasingly frustrated. Myself and my limited staff are the boots on the ground. I've got 3.5 million square feet of commercial space in North County that I manage with over 950 tenants, and 90% of my phone calls are coming from like the Roymar and the Copperwood for the last two years, let's say. It's really escalated over the last couple of years. And I managed Copperwood when it was, before I took over Roymar, and, and we were, really were able to curb the Copperwood issue, but they all went to Roymar. Then they chased them out of Roymar, and they go over to Copperwood. So I'm fighting this battle on the daily. Oceanside police are really responsive with our calls, but the traffic enforcement and the overnight parking controller guys, those code enforcement guys are not doing their job over there. The motorhomes come and go. It's mostly smaller vehicle traffic. The motorhomes are what's mostly visible, and when they do go away, we're still left with like, primarily the red SUV that seems to never go away with people smoking their drugs inside. It's brutal. And so the vehicle traffic, we need to help with the vehicle traffic. We need the overnight parking. I know that our other property owner has rallied for some signage, some additional signage to, for the one hour, or I'm sorry, two-hour parking and/or no overnight and oversized vehicles. We'd like to see that happen with actual signs on the property. I had the opportunity, along with another property manager here, Barbara, to meet with Brother Benno's about, I don't know, four months ago, before this thing kind of escalated, and, and nothing's really changed since then. I know my time is limited. We would ask that the council step up to hold Brother Benno's even more accountable and even perhaps beyond the current CUP structure if they can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Tyler Stemley. Thank you for letting me speak. I'm a born and raised Oceanside native. Born in Tri-City, went to El Camino High School, graduated in 2009. I'm also a commercial real estate agent with Colliers International, and I work with the building owners and the businesses in the area that we're all speaking about tonight. I've been working there since 2017, so fairly decent amount of time, I would say. I would also like to begin by acknowledging that the people working with Brother Benno's are good people, and they're trying to make a positive change, there's no doubt about that. My concern is that they may not be prepared to handle the situation in this area as it's evolved, and it explicitly occurs in this area because of where they're located, so there's a direct correlation there. There are an unacceptably large number of intimidating, dangerous, and violent people who are undeniably attracted to this area because of the services being provided by Brother Benno's. Brother Benno's may stop directly serving some people that engage in some of this behavior that we've been talking about. However, this does not do anything to stop these bad actors from staying in the area and continuing to menace the surrounding businesses and the residents of the community. As a leasing agent working in this area, I can speak to the fact that current businesses are leaving and planning on leaving as a direct result of what we're talking about today. Prospective businesses looking to come to the area sometimes won't even get out of their car when they show up to this business. I think that speaks volumes. There's, there's been a discussion about whether things have gotten better or worse here tonight, and I'm here to unequivocally say that things have gotten worse in recent months. I've been inundated with evidence of the deteriorating situation from the businesses that are in the area. I think a lot of this gets passed on to you folks as well. We have increasingly consistent stories of violence, theft, damage, threats. I also think we're missing the point here about whether things are getting better or worse. It's undeniably bad. It's undeniably unsafe. It's chaotic, and I say that as a 31-year-old young man, relatively young man, who has to go to this business park all the time. I'm sure other people feel even more unsafe being in this area. I'd challenge anyone who disagrees with that to spend a day in the business park for the next month and see if they come to the same conclusions. I'm all for solutions and dialogue about Brother Benno's staying open and providing services, but bluntly, I would suggest that this area is not suitable for them in the long term. In the short term, I would definitely support an increased amount of security and third-party security that are professionals, because it's just simply inadequate, right? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners Diane Nygaard, 25-year-old Oceanside resident. Recently, read the current status report on the condition of housing in the San Diego region, of homelessness in the San Diego region. And Oceanside, of course, is the highest in North County, both with our housed and our unhoused homeless population. This is clearly not a Brother Benno's problem. It is a community problem, and not just our community. It affects, it affects the entire state, the entire West Coast, much as a country. And it's not just increasing impact in this area. I can tell you, last month, we and 101 volunteers were at the Sacred Ale Salto waterfall in Oceanside and cleaned up 5,500 pounds of trash in that area. And we could only do one side of the creek, because the other side of the creek was continuous occupied homeless encampments, and we couldn't even touch it. And while people are getting out of homelessness every month, the agency serving this population will tell you that every month, there are new people who have just become homeless. We no longer have the COVID restrictions on eviction, so people who were on the edge are now over the edge. If not here, where? Where in our community would we deal with this? This is a critical service to our community. It is not a Brother Benno's problem. I think we need to be looking at safe parking places for people who have these vehicles to go and stay overnight. Safe campgrounds for people who don't want to be in shelters, because the other alternatives take a great deal of time and money. Providing low-cost housing is not something we can solve overnight. The population is here today, and we need to serve them today. So please, as you think about what makes sense here, consider this is a community issue. When we talk about things like RV parking and code enforcement, that's not up to Brother Benno's to do. Trash control is something, it's on all of us. We need to figure out a way that works for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Moskowitz, you were up earlier, so if you don't mind, we'll skip you and go to Barbara Fisher.
My name is Barbara Fisher, and I'm a property manager. I've managed in the Oceanside Industrial Park for over 23 years. I have been also a resident until just recently, Oceanside. My office was in the industrial park for 23 years. I've had a great many interactions with the homeless in the park. Over the last four months, I've been yelled at. I've had rocks thrown at my car. I've been chased while I was in my car. All this just for asking someone to leave private property. I have to honestly say that the level of people that we are dealing with now are so different than what we dealt with 24 years. This group is violent. They're arrogant, they're aggressive, they're confrontational, and they're honestly not well. It's become very dangerous for many of my clients, my employees, my vendors to be in the park. I constantly get phone calls, daily, from tenants, saying that they're frightened. People are sleeping in front of their entrance. I know this for a fact, because I went through this for years at my very own office. They're losing clients, and they're leaving. We are, my clients and our tenants, are spending an exorbitant amount of money picking up after this mess. We have people defecating all over the place. We have trash that we are picking up constantly. We've hired professional orders to come in and pick up. That's a lot of money. I'm constantly replacing locks on hose bibs. I'm constantly being woken up in the middle of the night because I have to go down and turn off water because someone broke into our water system. We are trying always to secure our fire and safety systems. They're breaking into our electrical boxes, our phone rooms. I mean, it's getting extraordinarily expensive and aggravating. These, Brother Benno's does a great job, but what we have now is a situation where they can't coexist. It's time for the CUP to be reevaluated and pulled. You can't have business and charity, or, it's just not, it's not work. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you for the city of Oceanside. Chairman, for letting me come here to speak today. My name is William Walker. I came here to Oceanside back in the 80s. I got married here in the city of Oceanside. My kid, I have a wife and four kids and six grandkids. And we have a church at 3320 Mission Avenue. I've been, I'm the security for the church, but not only am I security for inside the church, but I had to go outside the church to watch the parking lot to make sure everything is secure. First, I'm gonna give you an example of what happened on Saturday. After I left my meeting out of Vista, because I remember getting it, I go to a Bible meeting, and after I leave there, I go to set up the church on Saturday morning. When I came to the church, in the back of the church, I seen seven homeless people in the back of the church, smoking crack, smoke, all the gear, all the stuff behind the church. Right before this had happened on Saturday, I had called Mr. Collier to come to, about a week ago, to walk with me around the property. All the poop on the sidewalk, all the urine. If we walked around, you see where the homeless people are using the bathroom on the sidewalk. I talked with the people from the Africa Business. I talked with the people from the Beautiful Soul, our agent market, the martial art, Mary at the barber shop. They said, Mr. Walker, we are tired of these homeless people. They is making our life a living hell. I hear about they cleaning up the area. Go to the last chance. Ask the people what's going on in front of their doorstep. Every single day. Go to Yon Yon Dona, ask them what problem they got with it. Every time I call Oceanside PD, they always coming through in my light. They put a $500 truck on me to help me kill for calling the police. These are the homeless people. I tell, we are tired. The business people are tired. People say that the homeless people is not a problem. There is a problem. Sunday, the same exact group, I call Oceanside PD. Dispatch said, Mr. Walker, we are so sorry. We can't get there because we are so busy. They know me by name. We got some good officer. They work hard, but sometimes they cannot get there. And I'm telling you, the chairman member, all of my you guys, one day, let's go on 3320 Mission Avenue. Let's go there, and just ride around and see what you see. And you're gonna see, everything we telling you is true. The homeless people is out of control. They destroying everything around us. And a lot of the business, they're saying, hey, we lost a lot of members from our church because they didn't like what they were seeing in front of the church door. Sunday, the guy had a pet bull. They had blocked the parking lot. This van, same exact van, seven people selling drugs in the back of the church. When I confronted them, he told me if I get away, he can let his dog loose. I had to back off. I called this back again, told them what was going on.
Mr. Walker, thank you. Your time is up.
This is something, you gotta need to stop, please.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. I don't see any more names on the, on the screen here, but that doesn't mean you can't come forward. Joan, I see you wanna address the commission. Come forward.
Commissioner Joan Bachmann. As you know, I've lived downtown the entire time. I've lived in Oceanside. And there are homeless people everywhere. I volunteer at the Nature Center. Yes, we have many policies. There's no outside water or power at the Nature Center unless we turn it on. We have zero tolerance policies. For anything we find, it gets taken away. That's because that's there for children, and so we make sure it's, it's safe. I think there's, there's a couple of things we need to remember. The difference between us, all of us in this room, and the homeless people, we have access to toilets. We have trash cans. Our lifestyle creates a tremendous amount of trash. Our church goes and serves at Brother Benno's. One of our members, she lives here with me. And it's amazing how our food comes to us. And if you try to limit your plastic and limit all that, you can't. You, you try, and you still end up with all this trash. But ours gets taken away. It's just gone. Theirs isn't, and it's visible. Again, with the sanitation, not having access to a toilet is, is an incredible problem. I've cleaned up a lot of human excrement. I have been under the bridge on I-5 at Loma del Rey. You guys ever been under there? Very exciting. The city won't let us do that anymore, but we used to clean up there all the time. So I think, you know, we're not any different from some of the other people, except that we have, have options they don't have. They're also everywhere. I think there's, I wonder why do we put up with some of the, quote, nicer areas, don't provide services? Why aren't there a ton of homeless people in La Jolla? They have a ton of money. Why aren't they serving a lot of homeless people? Why are we doing it? And they're not, I think, per capita. It should be more spread out across all cities, across all areas and that. I do deal with them all the time on Oceanside Boulevard. Everywhere I go, there's somebody to deal with. We have a, a much bigger problem, and we need much bigger solutions. Public sanitation being one of them, and changing the way we get our food, the way it's distributed. We've got to change that, too. We cannot continue the way we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to come forward?
Thank you for allowing us to have a voice here. I'm Rod Phillips. I'm a resident of Oceanside and a business owner here in Oceanside. I'm not gonna paint all homeless people as bad people. It's been my experience that the vast majority of them are reasonable. They down on their luck, who hasn't been? However, what concerns me is the few bad apples, the folks who are confrontational, who enter into my place of business asking for money. And when the ladies refuse them, they, they get violent. They, they shout, they yell. And the ladies that are working with me, they don't have time to call 911. They're frightened out of their wits. They don't know what to do. I'm the, I'm the savior, and I'm not law enforcement. I'm not here to confront anybody. I don't want to. So I'm calling the police. Like I say, I don't want to paint all the homeless as someone doing something illegal. I think most of them are trying to get on their feet. However, what I find is that I don't have viable options when someone, when things get out of control, and they can escalate very quickly. Most of the people that come to my shop are women, and they don't want to be there after 7:00. They don't want to be there. The moment it gets dark, they want to leave. And I can understand. I'm not, I don't want to confront, I don't want to conflict with anyone. So what I would hope is that there's, whatever resolution So what I would hope is that there's, whatever resolution we come to, is that for folks like us that want to stay, is that there's someone looking out for us. I don't want to be law enforcement. I don't want to, I don't want confrontation. I'm not meant for that. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? All right. We'll bring it back to commissioners for discussion. Certainly, what I heard this evening is very reminiscent of what I heard when I was on the ad hoc committee for this consideration of the renewal of the CUP for Brother Benno's handful of years ago. Very similar. Difficult issue, as it was back then, to try to find the balance between the services that are provided, which I think everybody agrees are needed, and the balance between the right to have a business, to write, the right to operate a business without being imposed upon by those seeking the services from Brother Benno's. As I said earlier in my remarks, when we made adjustments to the CUP a few years ago, we took all the same information in and we tried to make that adjustment, and we asked for those updates as we're getting this evening. So I'm disappointed to hear that we haven't, that, that the conditions of the renewed CUP aren't being matched with what the expectation was when we, we made those adjustments. And at the same time, I'm pleased and grateful that the OPD went, has been very engaged and has offered some additional recommendations that are called out in our memo in front of us this evening. So I'll stop there, but I'm looking for some fresh, perhaps, ideas or thoughts. Again, I, I think I'm the only commissioner that was on that ad hoc back then, so if some of you are seeing this for the first time, again, it's familiar to me, so jump in if you have any thoughts or any ideas or questions. Commissioner Malick?
Thanks. I, I kind of see this as almost two separate issues. They're, they're related, but we've got the issue with Brother Benno's and the, and the CUP, which I think we can all agree, we, we can take another look at that and address the concerns, look at the recommendations that were made that have been implemented and see what, what effect that has in that local area. I think the larger issue we have is with the impact of the homeless that really translates to lawlessness in this greater area. We've seen it in a much broader area than just the industrial park. We've seen it at an adjacent facility that's, I guess, probably about a mile or two down the road. Lot of, just a lot of incidents that are anecdotal at this point. I'm not saying that they didn't happen, they absolutely did, I'm sure, but it would be interesting for us to understand kind of what the, what the crime statistics are, to get a better feel for what's going on in this area geographically, both from a, in the immediate area, because you've got a lot of micro terrain out there, there's a lot of different places where, where these events happen, and understand what the, maybe some patterns are, just so we can understand what we're dealing with on a larger picture. I think that helps us as a commission and, and as advisors to the city council to, to perhaps help them frame some issues a little bit better. And then if we can understand as well what the policies and strategies are for policing, also understand what constraints our law enforcement agencies are faced with, with this, this challenge. And I believe there are some that have, that are due to legislative efforts that have created kind of a catch-22 for, for the community, which is very unfortunate, because we've got good people trying to do good things, we've got business owners trying to conduct their business, and we've got these issues that we, we, we need to look at. I'm not sure how that can help us shape something, but understanding what those, what those challenges are may, may actually help us look at some other ways to, to help improve conditional use permits, other, other issues we may be dealing with, and any other recommendations that we may have in a larger context to help with this challenge.
Great, thank you. Vice Chair Morrissey.
You know, I think the business owners are being held hostage to this behavior, and it seems like it's been going on a long time. And the time I was on the planning commission, when you were chosen to be on the ad hoc committee, and you know what? It sounds like what you guys came up with is not, they didn't follow and it's not working. And it's time to do something different if we want a different result. And, you know, one of the things I heard is bad behavior is not, bad behavior is not a community problem. Bad behavior is bad behavior, and to put that on, on, on other, anybody than, other than the people that are committing bad behavior is misplacing the problem. And it's, and it's, it's not a Brother Benno's problem, but it's not a business park problem either. So, you know, I, I'm, I think it's time for us to do something different, and I think staff recommends that we appoint someone from this, I guess this commission, to be on a, a standing committee. I think it, now it needs to be a standing committee. I think it, it needs to come before this, this forum to see if they're doing, doing things or not, and I think it needs to, I think something needs to go out. If this doesn't, if this doesn't change, then we just, then we pull it, the CUP.
Thank you. Commissioner Dodds.
Well, it is, it is very apparent that the services that Brother Benno's provide is absolutely necessary, and I agree that there are two separate problems here. Pulling a CUP is not going to solve your issues, and I, I really am heartfelt for your plight, and I understand that this is a real issue, but this is an issue that even with the restrictions or the conditions that we put on Brother Benno's, that that's going to solve it. This is something that's beyond Brother Benno's. This is a, this is an issue that we as a, as a city, as, as communities, that we need to get involved and, and try to resolve that. And I don't have the answers, but the, the conditions that were, that were suggested, apparently they were not implemented when they were supposed to, and I think that we unfortunately have given Brother Benno's too much grace in the fact that there haven't been accountability. I think that we need to, along with the ad hoc, the ad hoc commission or the ad hoc group, needs to meet more regular, and there needs to be reports back to the commission at least quarterly to ensure accountability, that things are being implemented, and, and at least we can gather data and see if things are working, and we need to know if we need to redirect. But right now, we're just kind of shooting at the wind, suggesting that we pull CUP. I'm, I'm not for that, but we definitely do need to seriously address this issue as far as the homelessness. And I, I agree with my, my fellow commissioners that bad behavior is bad behavior. If we do have bad apples that are out there, then they need to be dealt with and, and need to be removed from the area. Now, I don't, like I said, I don't have the answers, but there are a lot of people that are homeless that need help, and Brother Benno's provides that help, and we just cannot take that away from them. Thank you.
Thank you. Captain, if you would come forward, I have a question about a couple of things I heard here. Statistics are important to be able to kind of gather the theme here of enforceability. So statistics kind of would help determine if, if things are going well or not going well. If I remember correctly, OPD has been gathering statistics related to Brother Benno's for some time, so if we were to want to look at some more recent stuff in comparison to sort of the baseline, we could make a determination as to how things are going statistically. Is that, is that accurate?
That, that is. We can pull calls for service, we can pull crimes reported, we can pull arrests in the area. The unfortunate part is that, you know, we're dealing with a quality of life issue here, and a lot of the times you can't tangibly measure that, but we can pull the calls for service and the arrests and the crime reports. But I think most of these folks here are probably more concerned with quality of life issues that, that we can't measure.
Right. Because what I'm sensing is there's an interest to, and I don't want to speak completely out of term, but an interest to perhaps see how things are going, maybe continue for a while, but then probably head into a direction where we're looking at statistics and trying to define something enforceable, if, if I kind of captured sort of the mood here of where the discussion is going. So an interest to resurrect the ad hoc committee on a, on a repeated basis of frequency to look at that information, take in information from the property owners, and then perhaps entertain another revised CUP that has enforceable actions related to them, if, again, if I've captured it correctly. So statistics, statistics would be important in that context.
Yeah, yes, sir, and we can, and we can pull that for you. Whenever we're going to set up these meetings and pull those statistics for you. I will say this, I've been here for about 20 years, and we have gone through this same process.
Right.
For 20 years. And it's just, as, as our personnel change, as the city's personnel change, this just kind of gets kicked down the road over, over and over again, and that's why I empathize with the industrial park folks, because they've been there the entire time.
Yeah, you're correct there.
So, so question is like, isn't that the definition of insanity, you know, is, you know, expect a different outcome? So my question to you would be, what would you do differently? I mean, these four things that you've, or I guess the additional four things, is that enough to see? I mean...
So you're, you're...
I want to know what you would do.
Mr. Vice Chair, you're, you're putting me in a, in a very uncomfortable position, because now I'm speaking as an individual and also as a representative of the, of the city of Oceanside.
Well, I don't, I don't mean to do that, but I'll just say, if we're going to try to come up with a solution, then for 20 years, it ain't working, so now what do we do? We have an opportunity, we're talking about it, so what is it?
So I think a start would be to put these restrictions in their CUP so that we can hold them accountable, so that when there's turnover on our end, on the city's end, on their end, these are set in stone, so that, you know, this, this lack of accountability, like Commissioner Dodd's, Dodd said, doesn't occur, because the CUPs are written in stone, and we can hold them accountable, whether I'm here, whether it's Sergeant Brazelton, whoever takes my, my place, or whoever takes the city planner's place, they have those written down in stone, and they can hold Brother Benno's accountable. That's where I would start. I will say this, so the city of Oceanside has anywhere from 50 to 60% of all the resources for homeless in North County. So maybe we, maybe we don't get rid of all the homeless by getting rid of Brother Benno's, but it would make a significant difference.
Thank you.
Thanks for sharing that. Commissioner Dodds, go ahead.
I had another question for you.
Oh. Captain, if you would come back.
Captain.
Sorry.
And you, you may, you may not be able to answer, but I know you recommended professional security services, and from the, from Brother Benno's side, I understand that that's going to be a cost. So my question, my first question is, is how many are we talking in addition as far as professional? And I'm not, I'm not talking about cost, but as, as far as personnel?
Security-wise?
Security-wise.
I, I'm not sure. Could be one, it could be two. I, I'm more concerned with the time. I think they need to have somebody there from 5:00 AM before the businesses open.
Yeah.
Until about, about 7:00 PM after the businesses close. Somebody who can report to the police department, to the business owners, and, and provide some type of authority around, around that area and some type of safety for the individuals.
Yeah, I, I would, I, I do agree with the 5:00 AM during summertime. I probably would recommend like 8:00, because it's still going to be light out, and if businesses, if there were people who needed to get extra work done and wanted to, wanted to stay late, 7:00 PM may not do it. But then as you get to winter months, people are trying to get out of there early, I think we can back down to 7:00. But I agree, I think there needs to be additional security, and from a professional, not the internal, because it doesn't sound like the people are respecting the internal security or people who will try and provide that service. I think it needs to come from a professional, from a professional side.
Yes, sir, I would agree, and I would, I would add to that. Production Avenue is clear. I, I drove down there today, and it was clear, but it's the surrounding streets that I don't know if the security guards aren't reaching out that far, or if they're just worried about production itself, because there were RVs and people, you know, hanging out on the sidewalk on my way here this, this evening.
Then that brings, that would bring another question for me then, because then it doesn't sound like it's just a Brother Benno's issue if we're just talking about that one area product. So now we're talking about this whole community, and granted, I understand that a lot of them are there because Brother Benno's services are there, and they're, now they're just hanging, but is there a possibility that the rest of the businesses that are there to kind of chip in to help out with this cost? Because that is a huge cost, because two people aren't going to be able to handle that entire area, but we're asking Brother Benno's to just take that whole cost. I'm, I'm just asking, I'm, I'm not a business owner in that area, but that does sound like that would be a big cost. I guess my... And I know you can't answer that question, but...
My only response is, you know, something is bringing these individuals to this area, and it's not, you know, they're not doing business there.
Yeah, true.
Before you leave, Captain, one more question. Commissioner Malick?
Yeah, thanks. It seems like we may be squeezing a balloon with this as well. You kind of put some enforcement on one area, and it just kind of expands to another. I know we've had, I believe, private security downtown now, and that's maybe pushed some people into a different direction as well. So I, I'm trying to understand what the requirement for the security is and the existing requirement for Brother Benno's to provide security. Is it, is it enforcing the overall park area, or is it just adjacent to the property that they occupy?
It's mostly to the closer adjacent area, but I think there is an expectation that it should be expanded beyond. That's kind of, you know, that's, so limited in scope, but really the reality is it should be, because it is impacting all the other property owners.
Right, and as you said, production av is clear, but the surrounding streets are where it's, and I've been down there several times for a variety of different business engagements. I've actually looked at commercial property in the area and was somewhat dissuaded by, by, by those issues, so I can, I can understand that. So yeah, I just was, wanted to understand what that requirement was. Thanks.
Thank you, Captain. I think that's it for the moment. So city planner, help, help us out. Our action tonight is really to receive and file, have this kind of discussion, but no firm action, although we could presume, adjust that and ask you and city staff to bring something back for consideration. So did I get that right?
Chair resolves, that's accurate. You know, just a couple reminders, last year at this time, we did, so the ad hoc committee still exists, it's composed of yourself, Commissioner Obama, and Commissioner Dodd, who you appointed last year, but really haven't taken any action, perhaps taking Commissioner Dodd's recommendation to meet quarterly, have us come back in three months with some statistics that we can work with the OPD on, gathering and informing, and make some further recommendations. I think that's how the process worked last time.
Could we, could we accelerate that and have you bring back consideration for adjustments to the CUP prior to having the statistics and the meetings, because then we're just kind of pushing it down? It sounds like there's an interest to maybe give some meat to the existing CUP by adding some stuff, and still have that process, but bring something to this body sooner than later.
Chair resolves, we certainly can do that. We can bring the CUP back at a notice public hearing if it's the desire of this commission to add some conditions of approval. We obviously would have to work with Brother Benno's to make sure that they can be agreeable to those conditions of approval, so that might take a little bit of time, but we probably could be in a position to bring something back as early as... bring something back as early as perhaps the first meeting in July.
Vice Chair Morrissey. Are there any city services that, it seems like if we just had some porta-potties and things like that? I mean, I don't know, I mean, this is, it's like, all the problem is going to this location, and there, it's kind of like if you're, boy, this is going to get political. It's almost like being in Texas or El Paso, and you're dealing with the immigration problem. They are dealing with a problem that is systemic, but they're dealing with the financial cost of it. Is there anything that the city can help to give them some relief, these business owners?
Vice Chair Morrissey, I can't speak for, to the city's ability to provide additional services. I can tell you the current efforts include the development and preparation of a navigation center, which will hopefully address some of these issues, hopefully get some folks into a facility where they're getting beyond just the basic services, but they're getting the help they need to further improve their lives. That's scheduled to open perhaps at the end of June, early July. So, that's something that's not online currently, that will become online. And once it is online, there's got to be some time to see if it makes any sort of improvement into the situation at the business park. So, that's an effort that I'm familiar with, that the city's currently working on. That's at the old Ocean Shores High School off of Vel Camino and Oceanside Boulevard.
But, but one of the things that I heard the captain say is that, if we didn't have Brother Benno's, we wouldn't have the homeless problem. And you know what? It's a travesty that...
I said exactly.
Sorry, Vice Chair, I want to be really clear, I did not say that.
Okay.
I said that we would still have a homeless problem, however, in that area, I don't think it would be as bad as it is today.
Okay, so, sorry I misquoted you, but that, all right, with what you just said, this is a huge problem, and I think if we're going to have a solution, we need to start thinking outside the box. What's worked, what's been done for 20 years doesn't work. So, the city needs, you know what, and you said, we got to, we got to do something different. We got, the city needs to get involved in this, and we got to come up with a solution that works better than what's working now, because it's not fair to the business owners that are there, that are afraid for their lives after 7:00 o'clock. I mean, I, 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 I agree with that, and one of these days, something's going to happen, and we're all going to be thinking, well, we could have done something, but somebody gets really, really hurt, and that's what I'm concerned about.
Yeah, I agree that something different needs to be done. So, we do have recommendations from OPD for additional recommendations that, in their opinion, should be added to the CUP. I did hear also that a professional security approach makes a lot of sense, and I think that is a good idea. So, I, I think what I'd like to see happen is we build in the recommendations with, with the external security into the CUP, and that come back to us very, very soon, at which point we can, we'll have the full commission at that point, we can entertain just that adjustment, or rescinding it. We can entertain kind of everything, but for the time being, I think we should build in these recommendations into, as a short-term solution into the CUP, if that's, if that's something we can do.
Chair Resolz, I think that's something we can do. The item was agendized as a discussion item, and now we're providing direction and just making eye contact with the city attorney. If that's something that's within the authority, since it is an agendized item for the peace planning commission to give us direction to come back to amend the CUP, that's certainly something we will do.
I think we've heard, we've heard a lot of the concerns, we've heard that a lot of the suggestions about bringing it back. We can take a look at the CUP and see what sort of room there is with the conditions that we have. I know there is a condition in there that talks about bringing, bringing the matter back to the commission or to a standing committee. So, we can take a look at the procedures that are already in place for addressing this and bringing it to a point where action can be taken. But there are, but Brother Benno's has, has due process rights with respect to changes to the CUP that need to be respected.
Yeah, and I don't want to overstep that. So, so, however the process lends itself to bringing back some of these recommended changes, and/or anything else that comes up in that public hearing is kind of the direction I'd like to see it go, unless any commissioners feel like it needs to go a different direction today.
So, Chair Resolz, if I heard the city attorney correctly, I think the appropriate measure at this point would be to analyze the existing conditions of approval, to see where these conditions might fit in under, to see what authority the planning, to confirm what authority the planning commission has to officially recall this back for further evaluation. Perhaps that's the appropriate road to take at this point. That's the direction you can provide us to take a look at the CUP and see where we can have it analyzed, and then bring it back for a further discussion item at a meeting sooner rather than later. And at that point, with the full complement of the planning commission and agenda-nized appropriately with direction to modify the CUP, we can do that and bring it back at a subsequent date to that meeting. So, two meetings from now, perhaps, we can be in a position to amend the CUP as opposed to the next available meeting.
Sounds good. Commissioners?
That's, I see nodding of the head, so I appreciate that. We're, we're, we're closed with the, with the input from staff, so if you'd like to sidebar with staff afterwards in the lobby, you're welcome to. So, thank you, everybody, for your input. You heard the direction this evening, we'll be bringing this back sooner than later with, again, another discussion and perhaps some action. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go to the next discussion item then. That item is adoption of the planning commission 2023-24 and 24-25 work plan. If you would bring your conversations outside, please, while we can continue our meeting, I appreciate it. Thank you very much. City Planner, go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman Resolz, members of the planning commission. Tonight, staff is asking that the planning commission recommend a draft work plan as we've outlined it for you here. The work plan basically outlines the goals and tasks of the, specific goals and tasks for the planning commission over the next two fiscal years, as is required by our, the planning commission bylaws. This recommendation would go to the city council at their meeting on June 21st. Some of the highlights of the work plan goals include making a recommendation on the city's comprehensive general plan update, which is a carryover, a holdover from the last work plan, as we're still diligently working on a very complex and comprehensive project. Another holdover from last work plan is making a recommendation on the local coastal plan. We've have a draft into the, of the local coastal plan update to the coastal commission now for a little over three years, getting close to three and a half years, and we have yet to receive comments from them, but we anticipate those this year, and so hopefully within the work plan timeframe, we can bring that document to you for recommendation to the city council. Something that's new on the work plan, that's very important, is following the general plan update, the staff is going to jump right into a comprehensive update of our zoning ordinance to implement the new general plan. So, we will be working on that shortly after the general plan work is done, and so we'd be bringing that item to this body for a recommendation to city council. And with respect to a couple of high-profile, complex development projects that are already in the queue, we would bring back the Oceanside Transit Center redevelopment project to this body for a recommendation to city council, and also a couple interesting projects that involve the repurposing of elementary school sites. So, one, that application we do have on file, and one we anticipate to have on file in the near future. One is known as the Pacifica Project. It's at the old Pacifica Elementary School, where this body would be making a recommendation to the city council on a general plan amendment zone change and tentative map and development plan. So, that's the brief overview of the work plan. I'm available for any questions that the commission may have.
Thank you. Commissioner Malick? Hey, Sir Joe, I have a couple of questions. Is the, the item G, Guajome Crest, is that a large development? Is it a, it's just this single physical address, I'm kind of curious.
Certainly. Commissioner Malick, it is a large, fairly complex project. It is a, I think the site, the site area is 16 acres with about six of them undevelopable. The applicant is taking advantage of density bonus law. It's a little over 80 units, I believe it's 83 units right now, and has some complexities to it, so that would probably, you would anticipate that being before this body, perhaps by the end of the calendar year.
And with the zoning ordinance update, as we get through the general plan update, will we see a precursor of what the proposed zoning ordinance will look like as a result of that general plan? I know we're going to vote on that, or that will be presented as a separate issue, but just under trying to get head around, what does that look like in terms of what goes where in terms of the general plan?
Sure.
So that we can tee that up for the next one.
Sure. So, to answer a pretty complex question, the general plan has, has high-level policies that kind of dictate the future of development, among other things, the future of development in the city. And what the zoning ordinance is intended to do is implement those high-level policies into actionable items. And so, the zoning ordinance would reflect those high-level, those policies within the general plan, you know, updated, as an example, updated development regulations would reflect the policies that are embedded in the general plan. So, that's one, one instance of what we would do.
Thank you. My last question on the general plan then, and maybe it goes to the zoning, is there any, anything in your realm that has to do with standards for development, whether that be that architectural style in keeping with a kind of a thematic approach in certain areas within the city, so that we don't have, you know, an aircraft carrier parked in somebody's backyard, those types of things that we're kind of looking at?
Certainly. So, we would call those our objective design standards, objective design standards, which do sometimes take the form of development standards. We have, to the extent that we have them, we have those in place now, but they're not specific to any one area of town. We will have the opportunity with the comprehensive zoning ordinance update to create more tailored development standards for specific parts of town, perhaps. A while back, the, this body and the city council considered a project on Coast Highway that some felt was out of scale and out of touch with the neighborhood. And one of the directions we got from council when they considered that project was to consider specific design standards for the South O neighborhood. Through the general, the development of the general plan, there's going to be some policies that are specific to each one of the 17 neighborhood planning areas that the city's currently sort of subdivided in, with no real policies in place, with the exception of a few for a few neighborhoods. We'll have the opportunity to tailor those development standards for neighborhoods specific to that. We sort of already have that, to the extent that we do with the Coast Highway Incentive District, we have some in the downtown zoning district, we have some design standards. The Coast Highway Incentive District unfortunately is still caught up with us and Coastal Commission not agreeing, we're not agreeable to their recommended modifications to that, that document. So, we haven't, it's not certified yet, nor is it implemented, even though it's been adopted by council for over three years. And to the extent that it will have, the smart and sustainable corridor specific plan will have development standards for the city's three major east-west transit corridors. So, we will see development standards tailored for those individual corridors, Mission Avenue, Oceanside Boulevard, and Vista Way. So, we will develop those through the policies that will be created for each one of those neighborhood planning areas, when there's some sensitivities that need to be had.
Very, very thorough. I don't see any other questions, Sergio, thank you for that. I don't see anybody in the audience, but I'll still ask the question, any slips?
Chairman Gonzalez, no, no slips on this one.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then we'll go to Commissioner and City Planner Reports. I don't really have anything this evening. Vice Chair Morrissey?
If, if I may interrupt, I apologize. We did ask on this item that there is a vote...
You're right.
On the recommendation to the city council.
So, we do need to vote regarding the recommendations in the report, that it go to council for approval. So, can I get a motion that it go to council for approval? A motion that this plan goes to council for approval. Thank you. So, a motion by Commissioner Malick, and a second?
A second.
And Vice Chair Morrissey seconds, so let's go ahead and vote. Thank you for clarifying that, City Planner.
Well, the record showed that the motion passes unanimously.
Great. Now, we will go to Commissioner Reports. I don't have anything. Vice Chair Morrissey, you do?
The solar light at the end of, near San Malo and Pacific, still haven't heard anything, so I'm going to keep asking every meeting, until we get an answer.
Commissioner Morrissey, when I get to my desk, I will send you the public works directors and public works managers' contact information.
Thank you.
And you can maybe send them an email.
Thank you.
Yes.
Commissioner Obama's not here. Commissioner Anthony, any report?
No report.
Great. Commissioner Verdodds?
Nothing to report.
Commissioner Simons is absent. Commissioner Malick? I guess the only thing I have is a result of our discussion this evening. I don't know if the larger challenge that we're facing is something that we should have a discussion on to figure out a way ahead there. Was kind of mentioned a couple of times, we're kind of kicking the can down the road, we've done that. We've got an isolated issue with, with one CUP, the Brother Benno's thing, and it's a good, it's a good way to look at the larger problem. But to Tom's point, and others' points, we've got a much larger challenge, that it may or may not be within our realm to figure out, you know, where do we go? But I think that it's, it should be noted that as a result of these other issues coming to our table, at a minimum, the city council has to understand that there are, not, I'm not saying that they don't, that there are larger issues at play. And I think the other point that was made by one of the business owners, the attorney that was up there, said that the business owners would very much like to be a part of this overall effort, and I think that we, you know, in order to get together to resolve challenges, you have to, it's a team effort, and, and I think that that's a missing element. So, you know, again, from a legal perspective, where do we stand? I don't, I don't know, but I think that if nothing else, if we can tee something up to be able to bring it forward, so that it's a matter of public record to say, we've been facing these issues as a result of, you know, concerns with, with CUPs and other projects, that there's a larger, there's a larger challenge out there. Not saying that they're not aware of it, but it, the anecdotal evidence that was out there tonight was pretty powerful, and, and I think that it's, you know, is, is part of our role, we need to, we need to at least figure out what we can do to at least address it in terms of bringing it to the attention of, of the city officials.
And I agree, I think we all agree with that. So, the question is, is when you kick this up to the city council, can you somehow encapsulate what Chase has said? Because it takes leadership, and we need leadership from city council to deal with this. And we can try to stay with the parameters that we're in, but it has to go beyond that.
Well, you know, Tom, the other thing was, we even spoke before, but I guess in the past, there's been meetings between the council and, and the planning commission to discuss...
This is a good one.
Challenges, and this is a great one, because, excuse me, it impacts development, it impacts the things, sorry.
It impacts the development, it impacts the, the issues that we deal with, and that they need to be, you know, aware of. So, I don't know how we could not talk about it, but if we could get together as a group to have... This is a really good one. Some topics of discussion, this being one of them, that's...
Well, I think the bigger thing is it, it's public safety. Somebody's going to get hurt out there. We see it in the news all the time now.
Yes, much worse than what you heard tonight, I will tell you that. I can't tell you specifics, I just know that I have heard firsthand accounts of some very alarming things that are happening that are... are happening that are not in the interest of public safety.
If I could write a couple of comments on the topic, and I'll ask the city attorney, attorney to correct me if I'm speaking out of line or out of turn. But this body's main focus is making land use decisions. And so we, we can control the CUP. Homelessness is a global issue that unfortunately many cities and communities are wrangling with and trying to tackle. The city council does have concerted efforts to address these, these topics. They, they, they provide resources to, as an example, the homeless outreach team that's part of the OPD. So they are addressing this. As this is maybe perhaps as good an opportunity to bring up as any, it came to my attention today that perhaps in August, there is going to be a workshop with the city council and the housing commission, potentially this body with respect to housing. Housing does incorporate those that are unhoused, so perhaps that's the, might be the opportunity to have that discussion. As I learn more about that workshop, I will share that with this body and make sure that if it's appropriate, that, that this body has a seat at that table to have that conver, very important conversation with the city council.
And one of the points that was brought up tonight by the captain, I believe, was that Oceanside manages 50 to 60% of the outreach programs for the entire county.
Yeah.
That's a, that's, that's a significant imbalance. Yes, we're not going to solve the, the overall issue, but understanding some of those points, building some context for that discussion, I think is very important so that we understand what we're faced with. While our bogey for, for, you know, lower income housing is what it is, there's a bigger issue here that goes into that as well. I just hope that we can have that at the latter end of August. I'll be out of the country in the beginning of August.
Anyway, good, good comments, good, good input. Thanks. City Planner, we'll throw to you.
Thank you, Chair Rizales. So for the planning commission, we have no items scheduled for June as of yet. The deadline to submit our advertising to the paper in the mailing house was last week's. We won't have any items for the first meeting in June. It's likely we won't have any items for the second meeting in June. However, given tonight's conversation and work, we may call a meeting of the ad hoc committee to further discuss Brother Benno's. Moving on to city council, on June 7th, they will consider a historic permit for historic designation of a single-family residence at 1010 Leonard Street. It's nothing that this body typically deals with, but it's certainly an interesting topic for the planning division. On June 21st, the council will consider two appeals. One will be the Modera Melrose project, and the other one will be the appeal of the OBC Oceanside Business Center at El Corazon. Both those projects were appealed by the Safer Group, and we, they will, council will be considering that appeal, those appeals at that time. And then moving out to, city council goes dark in July. Moving out to the first meeting in August, they will consider an appeal of the project as the Tremont, which is within the 1900 block of Trem, of South Tremont Street that this body considered, I believe, back in March. That concludes the city planner update.
Great. Thank you. Then we are adjourned.